I'd like to call to order the June 2, 2015, regular meeting, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, and invite you to stand with me if you choose. I'll be offering an invocation, and then Commissioner Dinning will lead us in the pledge. Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Bowling Green and all that's occurred here. We pray that you'll give us wisdom as we consider these issues for the city, and we ask that you provide protection for our public safety and our military. Thank you so much, Lord, for all that you do for us, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Dinning.
Over this way.
When are we gonna move the flag?
They moved the flag.
When are we gonna move the flag back over where it's supposed to be?
Our pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just for public's information, if you would like to be one that provides our invocation, please feel free to contact any member of the commission or Ms. Shaller over here in the clerk's office. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dinning?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Under awards and recognitions tonight, we have two that we'd like to call to your attention. After 20 years of service, David Buchanan is retiring as a firefighter, which I think is gonna affect our first item on the agenda tonight. Also, after 24 years of day of service at a fire apparatus operator, Dale Willis is retiring, so we wish them well as they move on to their next phase of life. Do anyone else have any awards or recognitions?
I do not.
Anyone on the commission? All right, Mr. DeFebbe, you have some requests for comments tonight?
Yes. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 621810B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city; KRS 621810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city; and KRS 621810G, discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity and discussions concerning a specific proposal if open discussions would jeopardize the siteing, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Any other comments, sir?
None, Mayor, thank you.
First item is approval of minutes for the regular meeting on May 19, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And all of our regular meetings, we provide the public an opportunity to make comments to us. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the City Commission's attention, this would be the appropriate time. Is anyone available to do that?
Hearing done, we'll take the first item, and then we'll get to you, Mr. Miller. First item is Municipal Order 2015-87.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Andrew T. Schultz to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning. Mr. DeFebbe.
As the mayor mentioned, there's a lot of turnover in the Fire Department. We're here today to address some of that turnover. I asked Greg Johnson to come forward to put his name forth, nomination for a new member of our Fire Apparatus Operator EMT position. Greg?
Good morning.
We do have quite a bit of turnover, but it's all for good reasons. I too would like to thank both David Buchanan and Dale for their service. They were great guys to work with. Most of us are gonna miss them, and we're sorry to see them move on, in some respects. However, we have one gentleman in the room, and I'm pretty sure he's not too sorry to see Dale move on, although we probably got along with him very well. Dale's retirement creates an opening in the position of sergeant, and I'm here to recommend the promotion of firefighter Andy Schultz to fill that position. Andy's been with our department for six years. During that time, he strived to improve his professionalism, and he's shown to be an engaged employee. Andy's participated in an effort to computerize an extensive library of structural pre-plans. He spearheaded some research on the integration of solar panels into some of our fire stations. Andy's served on the Employee Committee, which is an indication of the respect that his fellow employees have for him. Off-duty Andy's participated in Big Brothers and Big Sisters. He's also provided community service through serving meals through his local church. He's all-around good, good community member, and we're happy to recommend him. He comes highly recommended by his company commander, Paul Campbell. I support that recommendation, and I present him to you tonight, along with your family.
Brought his whole family with him. Thank y'all for coming. Congratulations. Guess we are gonna have to vote on it, though, so any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations again, and y'all are welcome to slip out if you want to. I know we're gonna go real long here. I'm gonna take personal privilege and move item number 24 up next to accommodate people who've driven from out of town and will be returning tonight, so this will be the first reading of Ordinance BG 2015-18.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 11, Finance, Taxation, and Economic Development of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to add a new subchapter related to the creation of an Energy Project Assessment District.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some people here tonight who can speak authoritatively on this subject, but essentially, we're here tonight to entertain a program that allows us to collaborate with the private sector, to use a creative program to help private people who have businesses access money and use the assessment vehicle to help pay for energy efficient improvements to its property. It helps us produce more income for the economy. It also helps us to have a higher assessment for the property, and it helps the business owner because he's allowed to access money and extract the payment of that from the savings that will occur through energy efficiency. Mayor, do you want to have Mr. Miller come forward?
I'd like to invite former Kentucky State Treasurer and attorney of Frost, Brown, and Todd. Jonathan Miller's gonna make this presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, I'm Jonathan, and I'm a recovering politician. In that role, I know two things. Number one, I'm gonna keep things very short. If there is a need for questions, I'll answer as many as you need. But second, having traveled the state many times, I know that I'm in a community right now that is not only one of the state leaders, but frankly, one of the national leaders when it comes to energy efficiency and green buildings. The first net zero school, the incredible work you're doing here in the City of Bowling Green Public Buildings with Anthony Wright, Harshot Train is here that's done some great work here with you. And you all know that for municipalities, for schools, for big businesses, there's this model called Energy Savings Performance Contracts that allows these groups to access, borrow money at low interest rates, and then to get energy efficiency improvements, and then to pay that back with the energy savings, so that there is no effect on the bottom line. The challenge, though, is in the private sector, for smaller and medium-sized businesses, how do they access that kind of financing? And that's what Energy Project Assessment District's about, or EPADs are about. This program is in 31 other states. Kentucky would be the 30, is the 32nd state to adopt it. Bowling Green would be the first city in the state to, again, to lead the charge on this. And what it allows private business owners to do, industrial and commercial owners, is to access this ready-made $2 billion financing market, pay for a energy efficiency improvement of their property, increasing the value, creating jobs, making your downtown and other areas more business-friendly, and then pay back that through their energy savings, again, so it doesn't affect their bottom lines, and doing it through the convenience of their property tax assessment. So it just goes on their annual payment, repayment of their loan would be just a line on the property tax assessment. What that does is it allows them to pass that on to the next property owner, so they don't have to commit to being at a property for decades. It also gives the folks in the finance industry comfort to know that if, for some reason, they went under, the next property owner would be able to access that debt. So the one thing I want to assure you, because this went through the legislature and passed overwhelmingly, and we had to impress because we used the word "property tax," this is not an involuntary tax on anybody. The only people who participate in this program are voluntary property owners who see this. No one else will see this on their property tax assessment. And the district that we're creating is not like a TIF district or something that's a confined area. The district would be the entire city of Bowling Green. So it allows, it's very different from other models from what you've seen. But it's a proven model. It will help your local businesses do these energy efficiency improvements. We already have a local businessman, John Ridley, who's gung-ho and ready to go with his own EPAD project. And what my hope is, is that working with the chamber, and I just left a meeting with Ron Bunch, that if many other businesses join in and create this demand for energy efficiency improvements, we might create a whole new jobs industry here in Bowling Green, Warren County, working with Western Kentucky University to create the kinds of jobs that can't be outsourced to China or India. So this is one of these very rare win-win-win, nonpartisan things that so rarely happen in Frankfurt, but could be bringing to Bowling Green. Your role is simply as a conduit. None of your costs will be assumed by the taxpayers. These projects will pay the cost that the city will incur in administering it, but it could be a tremendous economic development and jobs creation tool. With that, I will be quiet and see if you have any questions.
If I can restate a couple of things to make sure that everybody's on the same page. There's no new taxes involved with this. It's the choice of the property owner to impose this assessment on himself.
Correct.
The assessment is collected through the property tax, but the city is not responsible to pay it if the individual does not pay their taxes.
Correct.
And it expires when that individual loan is paid off.
Right. And there is no expense incurred by the city, and there will be some administrative costs, but those will be repaid back to the city through this project. A percentage of the project will go to that. So you're not only not on the hook for anything, but even in the worst-case scenario, you would be on the hook for bailing anybody out.
Good to hear that part of it.
Yeah. And again, these aren't promises in a vacuum. You are the first, you would be the first city to do this in Kentucky, but 31 other states have done this. So this is a model that's replicable, that's proven a success, and that can really be a big benefit.
Does anyone have any comments?
And I know it's in this, but the public doesn't have this, so I was just gonna ask the question. What happens if the business moves or goes out of business?
So the property assessment stays on that property. So whoever assumes that property next, whether it's through a sale or perhaps even in the worst-case scenario, bankruptcy, it goes to the next property owner. So again, the city, the county, nobody will have to assume that. It just sticks in the, this is a private sector program. It's private money coming in, private money going out. The only role the city is to be this conduit to be able to use the assessment process to make this flow, as well as potentially, you can use this as a great economic development tool.
We already have a similar concept in place with the improvement assessment bonds. These assessments actually be recorded in the kind of clerk's office, so when people do title searches, they'll pick it up. We administratively, we put it in Jeff's department. He volunteered to take it and do it. So Jeff will put it on the tax bills each year, and as Mr. Miller said, this is not an obligation of the city. It's a total obligation of the property owner who voluntarily requests this, but it'll be on the tax bill every year, and then once the debt's paid, it'll go off their tax bill.
It's only minor administrative costs.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We're allowed to charge an administrative?
Right. So there will be minor administrative costs, but you will be charging the deal. So up to 1% of the revenues of the deal can be used to pay those administrative costs, and those will be far more than you will incur.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming today. All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you for being here, and if you, I know you needed to leave, it's fine. Thank you, Mr. Ridley, for being here as well.
All right, then we'll go back to the second item for consideration, which is Municipal Order 2015-88.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Marshall Gray Jr. to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. These next four items are reappointments to the various boards that the city has. Without saying the same thing over and over, we truly appreciate their voluntary efforts to make this a good community and thank them for their service. Marshall Gray's been on the Housing Authority. This is ending his first term, so any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-89.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Greg Gay and Sandra McAllister to the Bowling Green Historic Preservation Board.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-90.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Cortland Atkinson to the City-County Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-91.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Delane Simpson and Jack A. Thomas to the Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Boards.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-92.
Municipal order authorizing and approving negotiations for an agreement accepting bid number 2015-27 for employee onsite medical clinic services from CareHere PLLC of Brentwood, Tennessee.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. With the commission's courtesy, I'd like for them to consider items 6, 7, and 8 as a family to be discussed jointly. I would ask Mike Groves to come up before he starts commenting. I think it's important for us, and I think the commission certainly knows us, that managing our healthcare costs is not a benign endeavor. It constantly takes our effort to manage that and reduce those costs. Over the last seven or eight years, we've been using an employee management group to help attack the root of our costs, and tonight, we're here with three methods that we believe will help us save costs for our citizens, as well as provide good healthcare. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Good afternoon. The first item that we're considering is the onsite medical clinic or center. As you're all aware, having heard presentations before on this, this is kind of our next step in trying to save the city money with their healthcare costs, and we're recommending entering into an agreement with CareHere PLLC of Brentwood, Tennessee, to provide that service for our city employees and dependents that are on our medical plan. The purpose, of course, is to save city money. We feel that by offering the clinic onsite, that we can reduce our costs for doctor visits, labs, generic prescriptions down the road, also save the city money in our employee medical services, such as pre-employment physicals, drug and alcohol testing, some basic workers' comp expenses. But the primary focus right now is for cutting costs to our medical plan. The benefit to the city is, we believe, through studies done by our consultant, Cheryl Morgan, we can save in the neighborhood of $700,000 over the next three years. The benefit to the employee is that they'd have the incentive to come to the clinic at no cost to them, and also much less wait time than they might have in a normal medical situation. We've been exploring this for a couple of years. Mark Morgan with Cheryl Morgan, who's here, is probably the one that first brought it to our attention. We've very slowly and plodingly reviewed this. Shannon Mason, who made a couple of presentations to you, is also here. She's the one that did the primary work on evaluating the program, taking the potential costs and savings, and presenting that to us, and of course, came to two BOC planning sessions that you had this last year to present the information to you. They helped us put together a request for qualifications that we sent out to a number of organizations and companies. We received eight responses, two of which were considered non-responsive. Shannon did the primary evaluation and analysis on the remaining six. We had an employee committee, including two other members that are part of our health committee, being Michael Kiefer, a police sergeant, and Steve Mylum, an IT, as well as the city manager, Lori Gray, our benefits manager, and myself, and Shannon. Also, met with three companies that we interviewed. I went through numerous factors that I've listed in the memo for you, looking at cost, what services they would provide, wellness services, experience with cities and other municipalities. We also visited, happened to be CareHere, but we visited two local government clinics operated in northern Kentucky last spring, just to get an idea of how they work. So we're here to recommend entering into an agreement with CareHere. We feel that their staffing model of having a doctor as well as a nurse, their experience in Kentucky, working with other cities, working with entities that try to collaborate with each other, also Cheryl Morgan's experience working with them, the fact that their headquarters is in Brentwood, for those reasons, we're recommending that we enter into an agreement with them. Any questions? We also have Bernie Livers, who is a vice president with sales and marketing with CareHere. He is here as well. In case you've got any questions for them.
Yep. Will there be any communication problems or document problems or testing problems with our clinic and specialists that we may have to go to? Now, I guess I'm concerned as to whether or not tests that we may give here necessarily gonna be acceptable to a specialist. And I realize they will, in many cases, want to do their own testing on different things, but is there a break somewhere or another to where there could be some problems in corresponding medical records between those two entities?
There shouldn't be. Any of the companies that we talked to, and specifically CareHere, they have electronic medical records. It wouldn't be any different than if you went to an urgent care type clinic, or if you went to a regular GP doctor, and that doctor or that clinic has to share those records with a specialist. Same thing would happen here. And also, to make it clear, those records are controlled by that company. The city has no access to those records. But electronic medical records would allow those to freely go to whatever specialist the employee needs it to go to.
An individual employee going to our healthcare center is going to save what and how much roughly versus that same individual having gone to Dr. so-and-so around the corner?
Well, right now, we have a deductible. It could be, one plan has a $400 deductible, the other $750. So it could be that they would have paid that entire doctor visit had they gone to the doctor for the first time. That could have been $100, $150. Or at best, pay 20% if they've met, say they've met their deductible and now they're paying 20% of the doctor visit. Go here, it costs them zero. Generic drugs cost, you know, anywhere up to $15. Go there, it would be free.
So our clinic intent is to be for minor emergency-type visits, preventive?
Not so much, not emergency, but yes.
Yeah, I'm not talking--
Something you would go see the doctor for.
Yeah.
Not an emergency room.
Yeah.
But if you need to go to your doctor for, you know, "I've got a cold, I've got the flu," or, as you said, preventive, to go, you know, once a year to get a preventive physical. And one of the advantages is that they only schedule three appointments an hour. Each employee would be, or a dependent, should get a 20-minute appointment with the doctor or the nurse, whoever they're seeing. So chances are, they're gonna see the medical provider longer than you might had you gone to a typical doctor's office. Also, virtually all the appointments are by appointment, so you're not sitting there waiting for a long time. But typical things that you would go see your family doctor for, or go to an urgent care for if you can't get into your doctor, but you would not go there if it's an emergency, obviously.
What kind of opening times are we visualizing at this stage?
We'll have to work with the company, work that out. Our model that we did the request for qualifications on was in the ballpark of 16 to 20 hours a week. We obviously like it to be open as long as possible, but there's a break-even point. And the model that Cheryl Morgan gave us back in the fall is likely we're looking at 16 to 20 hours a week and be able to save money. Now, if we can find another employer to go in with us, which, you know, we're attempting to do, obviously, that expands the number of people that potentially would come, and we can have more hours. But that's something we'll have to talk to them about. We'll want to make sure we've got some morning hours. We also want to make sure we've got some late afternoon/evening hours to accommodate various people and shifts. But that's something we still have to work out, the specific hours that will be open. And that will probably be revised as we see the experience. If we find nobody's come, very few people are coming on Thursdays, then we might not be open on Thursday, and that lets us be open more hours the other days of the week.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments or questions? Mr. DeFebbe?
I'm sorry, is the commission done? Are you all done? Just wanted to tell you what the next step is. We'll enter into more intense discussions with CareHere and get their input into the actual clinic design. We would go out and start sharing in more detail with our employee groups around the city, so they would ask questions, have any concerns. We would essentially communicate the whole program through the Employee Health Committee. Then finally, we would start building our clinic, which would be located across the way where building codes used to be. That would be the new clinic.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-93.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-39 for an agreement with Maritain Health Incorporated of Buffalo, New York, related to employee health and third-party administrator services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We are self-insured, and we provide services through the mechanism of what's called a TPA. We feel it good every so often to go out and ask if others would be interested in providing third-party administrator services. We did that process, and we're here today to tell you the results and recommend that Maritain Health be our new TPA. I'd like to turn it over to Mike. He's done the bulk of the work with the Employee Health Committee, and Lori Gray does yeoman work in this function, doesn't, is not a high-profile person, but she does a lot of the work. I think Lori's here. There's Lori. So Mike, you wanna lay it out?
Sure. As the city manager said, we've been self-funded since 1992. We were originally with underwriter safety and claims out of Louisville using the Center Care Network. In 2007, the city made the decision to bid it out, wanting a plan that had equal access to both local hospitals. We just went with Cheryl Morgan at that time, and they helped us with the bid process. We decided to go with Humana, as well as the TPA and the network. Since then, we've added our 750 health reimbursement plan, and North America Administrators actually handles the HRA reimbursement aspect for us. The contract with Humana is up each June, June 30, and having been with them since 2007, we felt it appropriate to put it out to bid, as the city manager said. We've had some recent rate increases, as well as some customer service issues, and so that helped push us to put it out to bid. Cheryl Morgan prepared the RFP for us.
Cheryl Morgan prepared the RFP for us. We decided administratively for the city to put the bid out to keep a record on what happened, and also, since it's public dollars involved. We received seven proposals. Five of them were comprehensive in offering all the services that we were looking for in the RFP. Lisa Stam and Robin Curry at Cheryl Morgan were the primary personnel that did the evaluation for us. And the RFP did specifically list a number of evaluation criteria that I have listed there for you, but that included, obviously, fees, the networks, pharmacy program, and other services. We selected three companies to be interviewed. Lori Gray, Mark Morgan, and I conducted those. We're recommending Maritane, which is part of Aetna, to be our TPA, and of course, Aetna is their network. We're told they both use the Center Care Network locally. I'm sorry, both Maritane and Humana use the Center Care locally. So anybody that's concerned about, "Well, my doctor was in Humana, are they going to be in Aetna?" Maritane, the answer is, if they're local, chances are they are. Cheryl Morgan evaluated what they call a disruption report. They actually looked at claims for the last year, and also the doctors and providers used for the last year, and found that had the claims been processed by Maritane, at least the same amount, if not more, of the dollar claims and providers are in the Aetna network compared to Humana. So anytime you make a change, there's going to be somebody out there that, that doctor, that provider is not in the network. But we feel very confident that the large majority of our providers and claims would be handled by Aetna-Maritane. Another reason for making the change is that their administrative fees are quite a bit less. We're estimating $54,000 less than the other two companies we interviewed, and $100,000 less than what Humana would have charged us had we stayed with them. Maritane has agreed to hold their fee flat for three years, and we're working feverishly to get a switch over for July 1. Lori and I, Mark, and other people from his staff, and Ryan Vaughn, who's also with Cheryl Morgan, we're on a two-hour phone call with Maritane today, starting to go through all the steps we have to go through to switch over July 1, but we feel confident we can do that.
Any comments or questions from Cheryl? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-94.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement, an amend, excuse me, authorizing the continuation of and an amendment to an agreement with Cheryl D. Morgan and Associates for Healthcare Consultant Services for fiscal year 2016.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFabo.
I asked Mike to come up and finish the triad.
Just stay up, Mike.
You've heard the name Cheryl Morgan a few times, so I obviously won't go over the history. We did approve, we did go out to bid again for broker services in fiscal year 2013, more due to interest from other brokers in getting the city services, not due to any problems or concerns we have with customer service. However, the city did approve a municipal order to proceed with Cheryl Morgan for another five years. They agreed to keep the rate flat for that five-year period, but because of the amount, it has to come back to you annually for approval. Obviously, they help us review our medical plan. They advise us on ways to save money. They conduct surveys and provide comparative information. They work with the claims administrators. They help us bid out services. They also get us quotes annually for our stop-loss insurance coverage, advise us on the Affordable Care Act. One example they did to save us money this year was they negotiated with Humana not to raise our administrative fee for the year, and that saved us around $10,600. Obviously, they helped us bring the onsite employee health clinic to you for approval. They've spent a lot of time working on that. And there is, the reason for the request for an amendment to the agreement is by moving into the phase of building the clinic, there would be an additional consulting fee to them that would annualize to $12,460. So that would be in addition to the $25,000 we're currently paying them, although that doesn't start until we open the clinic. Recommending we continue the agreement another year, as well as amending it to include the consulting services for the health center.
Comments or questions from Mr. DeFabo?
One thing I'd just like to say, Mike, is I appreciate the work that you and your committee, the staff has done, as well as the Morgan Group, for what y'all have done to save not only the employees of the City of Bowling Green money under healthcare, but the taxpayers. So thank you very much for that.
And Mr. DeFabo pointed out Lori Gray, but she is the one that's handled a lot of this day-to-day, so thank her too.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori.
Any comments or questions?
Good job.
Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you. And you are welcome to slip out if you choose to. I know you might have a trip as well. Municipal Order 2015-95.
Municipal order authorizing public safety software subscription services from N4 Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of $69,915.42 for fiscal year 2016.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
Number nine represents the annual software maintenance services for our main public safety program. We have ongoing contract with this company, and we're here today to ask you to renew it in the amount that they requested. Lynn has negotiated this previously, and we feel confident that the money requested is value-delivered. So Lynn's here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-96.
Municipal order authorizing contract extension for annual demolition of structures and site clearance services, bid number 2013-32, with Fletcher Excavation LLC of Smith Grove, Kentucky.
Motion by Hill, second.
By Dunning. Mr. DeFabo.
As part of our code enforcement efforts, ever so often, we demolish and unclear various lots and buildings in the community. We have a standing contract that is obtained through bidding. We're here today to ask you to award the second year of our relationship with Fletcher Excavating. Brent Childers is here. If you have any questions, we spend about $60,000 a year, or have that budgeted to handle this expense.
Comments or questions?
Is that enough, Brent?
Depends on the year.
Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-97.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-44 for irrigation, installation, grassing, and final grading of west end soccer field from Parlane Outdoor Solutions of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $33,230.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. At your fall retreat, you directed staff to finish a new soccer complex on the west end of the community. That process has been broken down in essentially three phases. The first phase is the design of the site and prep work, drainage, et cetera. Second part was the lighting, which you were adamant that you wanted it to be a first-class facility. And the third is, we're here tonight to look at building the actual surface on the field. We had two bidders. The low bidder is Parlane Outdoor Solutions of Bowling Green. It should also be said that we plan to talk to our partners at the church to obtain their contribution shortly to the project. Brent, if you'd like, would give you a brief overview of the project and tell you where we are. Suffice to say, we're on time and under budget. Is that correct? So he's here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-98.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-38 for City Hall Carpet Project from Sandusky Construction of Bedford, Kentucky, in the amount of $68,000.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill.
Anticipating your question, I too asked myself, "Aren't there people in Bowling Green that sell carpet?" So we had our purchasing people make some calls to people who are on our bidder list, and these are some of the comments. Does not have a labor force or a project this size. I won't give the name. They came to City Hall to look over the actual requirements, but these are good time, and they're very busy. Did a walkthrough for this project, but did not have his numbers together. Had problems with existing Merklow to get this project in timely. Wasn't sure if would be interested, but thought it gave us some thought. Glad we called, and we'll make sure they get on our bidding list. So that, I just want to thank Marilyn Perigin for making this happen. Suffice to say, it's obvious that it takes a special size and bidding time to be able to put carpeting in this larger facility. So we had one bidder, and we're recommending your approval for that.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-99.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-46 for City Hall Tile Project and Bathroom Renovations from Carter Douglas Company of Russellville, Kentucky, in the amount of $65,400.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill.
For this particular bid, we had two bidders, and as you can see, the bids are very close. We're going to be installing new bathroom fixtures, actual faucets and commodes and other apparatuses, as well as build-ins and partitions, and as well as put new tile, tile in all the various bathrooms. So we had two bids, and we're recommending Carter Douglas, the low bidder.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-100.
Municipal order authorizing contract extension for concrete, bid number 2014-29, with Kenway Concrete of Kentucky LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin.
Similar to demolition, we went out for a party bid, and Kenway Concrete had our bid from last year. We're happy with their service. We did a dual-departmental public works, park and recreation, asking both to extend the contract for another year for Kenway Concrete. Brent is here, as well as Jeff, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-101.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to and acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for Fiscal Year 2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Funds in the amount of $26,255.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
This is an ongoing collaborative bid between us and Warren County to apply for what is known as Edward Byrne JAG funds. Officer Byrne was a police officer who was killed in line of duty in New York City, so they named a grant program after him. We split the submission. We would get, hopefully, $13,126 to use for in-car cameras. Nick Cook is here, if you have any questions, as well as the Chief of Police.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-102.
Municipal order accepting donation from Romer Elrod Trust Fund for handicapped children to provide supplies and equipment for Camp Happy Days.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Hill.
Knowing you, as I do, this didn't have to come before you, but I know that you want to say thank you to this trust fund for providing $9,030 to our special kids at Camp Happy Days. Last time we received these funds was in 2009, and we're very thankful it could be used again here in the city. Brent's here, if you want to hear anything about Camp Happy Days.
Camp Happy Days, a longtime event with us. We're excited to do that every summer, so I want to especially thank the Romer Elrod family for being able to help provide us that opportunity this year. Any other comments or questions?
And for those that don't know, Mayor, the Roma name is a name that's been in this community for many, many, many years. They had a lumber company as one of the businesses, and they've always been good citizens and good neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And that what we've all been waiting for. Municipal Order 2015-103.
Municipal order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated fiscal year 2016 operating budget and financial statements ending June 30, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. If we'll remember back to the time when the city agreed to use its full faith and credit to issue bonds for the trans park to end the bonding situation that was inherited there. One of the commitments that we accepted and required was for the ITA Board and their agent, the Chamber of Commerce, to give an annual operating budget and financial statement to this board. Suffice to say, Ms. Hill, Jeff Mizel and I, who were involved in various aspects of the ITA Board, have heard and voted, at least Melinda and I have voted to approve this. Ms. Meredith Robinson is here to give you a short overview of their budget, as well as to brag about the good things they're doing there.
Ms. Robinson, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. First, I will say that I am well aware that the odds of my affirmative vote is directly proportional to the brevity of my comments. So I will go through this quickly. If you do have questions, please feel free and stop and ask along the way. Oh, no. You've got hard copies in front of you. I can walk through them. The first is just a map of the trans park, and the only thing I would point out there is if you look where it says Lot 19, that, ah, there we go. So I will show you what's new. Is this over here? This 85 acres is now currently under option by the ITA, along with the 35 acres up close to 31W. So not only, we are filling the park at such a rate that we are now having to option additional property, which is an excellent problem to have. This is the trend of our annual wage assessment. Just to show you that we are now over $1 million a year, this will be the first year that we've collected over a million in wage assessment for the trans park, and given the projects in the pipeline, we continue to see that going forward. Here's our revenue for the proposed budget for 2016. Just a couple items to note. One, the decrease in rental income is due to the fact that the ITA owns two rental houses that are sort of outliers to the trans park. They're not contiguous to the park, and so we will be looking to sell those during the current fiscal year. The wage assessment, you'll see the proposed budget of $1.55,000, $1,055,000. That's a projected 3% increase over 2015. That is a conservative estimate. We do anticipate bettering that. Additionally, going down, where you see lease revenue, this is the payment on the bonds, the principal that's made every year, and that number comes directly from the bond schedule from the bank that I get from Mr. Mizel. Grant income, you will see for the current fiscal year, $340,000. We did receive an invest-prep grant through the TBA, which was a half-million-dollar grant, and we ended up getting some really great bids on the project. And we extended Technology Way, widened it, and graded to building pads with that funding, so they matched that grant. And then this other income is the fact that the ITA is a flow-through for an economic development bond for the Bilstein project, which was landed in 2013. So you'll see that as an out, corresponding out on the expense side. This is our operating cash expenditures. The green line, the forecast, was the original forecasted budget for the ITA when the park was originally founded. The blue line is actual, so you can see we are doing way better than what was projected originally when the park was conceived. I mean, we intend to continue that trend to keep it under the $450,000, which is our goal. These spikes here are due to professional fees, so as we get big projects that require more legal fees or more engineering, those are sort of good spikes to have. These are our actual operating expenditures. One, the management fee is a 3% increase. That's per our negotiated rate with the ITA and with the city. Professional fees, again, the spikes that you see are related to primarily legal fees related to the larger projects, Bilstein's, Constellium, but again, with, given their capital investment, those are good expenses to incur. And then the other item I'd point out is the $500,000, which is the corresponding out to the economic development bond for Bilstein. And then, good news, all of last year for 2014, it was a banner year. We had $211 million worth of capital investment and 663 jobs created, with $155 million of that coming in the trans park with the Constellium project. It was the largest announced project of a new location in the state of Kentucky for the second year running. So very good news for our partnership. And these are 2015 year-to-date through yesterday. yesterday. We're already at 739 million for the year and 610 jobs, with 261 million of that coming from the trans park and 450 jobs just within the trans park, and we've still got half a year to go. So, we intend to post a billion dollars this year. That's our goal. As always, we greatly appreciate the working relationship what we have with the commission, with Mayor's Office, with the City Manager's Office, and all the departments. It really does take a village to do this and recognize this level of success, and we appreciate that and look forward to many new projects.
Mr. Dunning.
Couple questions.
Yes, sir.
If you can go back to your map, first page.
Sure. Whoops. There we go.
As we look at this picture?
Yes.
And we look around those partials?
Uh huh.
How many more acres do you have that are available right now?
Total, we have about 500 acres, but the reality is, is this 100 down here really isn't developable. If you've been out there, it's, we call it the goat property. It's kind of like this. It'll be something, we're looking at other options of, could that possibly be a swap we do with another pump? It'd be great for a cattle farm, but not great for investment for a multitude of reasons. So, we've got about 400 usable acres right now in the park. And the last two transactions, if you will, Bilstein, which went here, whoops, I lost my, where's my thing? Here was 72 acres, and then Constellium, which is going right here, is actually 100 acres. So, we get a couple more of those projects. We're going to be, we're going to be in need of some new land quickly.
Point to, if you can, the two partials that you own as rental property, houses.
And they're actually way down here, not on this map, which is why they would be sold.
Both?
Yes, both. Both partials. From what I understand, they were houses that were purchased in the beginning with the trans park in order to get some of the land. There was some of that swapping going on. So, the ITA does have several rental houses currently, and those are two that would not be demolished and sort of built on in the future.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Quite great work.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFabo, have anything else?
No.
All right. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-104.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Graham Packaging Company LP.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 18 and 19 are in the same family. Commissioner Hill is the sponsor. Jeff will explain the individual natures of both of these, but I think it's important for the public to realize, it doesn't get a lot of press, that this commission, this city incents a number of jobs. We provide, we withhold generally from people who work in our community 1.85% to foment economic development and to create jobs. We have agreed through the job development incentive program, in which Ms. Hill is the chair and Ms. Paragon are members, and I'm a member, to provide 1% of that 1.85% for 10 years. And at the end of 10 years, we're made whole. We believe that's an important investment to make. Without jobs, we don't have the community. So, we're proud of this program. If it's okay with you, if Jeff could identify the details of number 18 and 19.
First one is Graham Packaging Company. They're estimating 68 new jobs. Annual payroll's going to be about 3.3 million a year, so we're looking at a over 10-year period. This is to abide by the KBI, the state program, that 1% represents about $329,000 of our withholdings, occupational fees. But, the good side is, for the first 10 years, the city would collect approximately $280,000. At the end of the 10 years, we would go back to the 100%. So, put those two together, that's a significant amount of withholdings. This company will be locating in the South Industrial Park. Not exactly sure the exact location, but it's in that park. The second on your agenda is with Vector Horizon Technologies. They are currently, I think currently have about six employees in the WKU Central Region Innovation and Commercialization Center, the ICC. And I had to look that up, see what that meant, but they're proposing to add another 20 jobs, and these are high-paying jobs, good jobs. Annual payroll is, let's see, approximately $1,003,000 a year, and over the 10-year period, this would represent about $128,000 of incentive to them. City would collect probably about $109,000 over those first 10 years, then at the end of the 10 years, we would collect 100%. So, both of these are two good projects and very good-paying jobs coming into the area. So, I'll answer any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-105.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Vector Horizon Technologies LLC.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. I believe we've had the explanation, so if any other comments or questions, please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-14.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget, ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016 by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great pleasure that staff presented this year's budget to you. Again, we are presenting a spending plan that attempts to, and will live within its means, provided us by the citizens of Bowling Green, as well as to pay our bills, to make certain investments, to treat our employees with fairness, and most importantly, no new taxes. So, we ask your approval. It has been vetted through an explanation by staff. We're here to answer, ask, enter any questions you may want, but we ask you to approve.
Comments or questions? Probably the most important thing we do all year.
It is. Most important responsibility.
And again, I'm glad you're able to say that we weren't requiring any new taxes. We're able to pay all our bills, so, good job.
No new debt, too.
Excellent job.
No new debt.
Excellent job. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-15.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedules G for general classified, S for protective sworn, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees, and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2016.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. One of our goals, as mentioned earlier, is to modestly reward within our ability our employees for the services they provide to the public. We use a structure known as the classification pay schedule to accomplish that. We're here tonight to ask you to approve that. Some of the changes that were made were discussed with you. Michael Grubbs is here. If you would like to take you around the field again or answer any questions here.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Grubbs? Thank you so much. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-16.
Ordinance terminating interlocal agreement with Warren County. Ordinance terminating interlocal cooperation agreement with Warren County related to public safety mobile radio communication system.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo.
One of the successes that we've enjoyed with our partners in Warren County is the development and implementation of a new 800 megahertz radio system. It was talked about for many years. This commission, as well as the group at the county level, have worked together, both at the political level and the operational level, to make this happen. We have a new committee that we put together to make this go, involves our senior staff, our public safety staff, working as a board to make some decisions about this. I believe the mayor has felt important for us not to have extra bodies that are no longer, that are obsolete. And with the new committee, this committee becomes obsolete. It's served its purpose. I think the current committee is working well, as evidenced by the success of delivering a new 800 megahertz radio system. So, we, from the staff point of view, recommend your approval. The chief of police is here, Doug Hawkins. Do you have any questions?
Any comments or questions? Again, this is our effort to reduce the amount of boards and commissions that have either redundant activities or limited use to us, and so this will be the first reading for this particular one, even though that their activity has been absorbed by the new committee. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Paragon?
I'm sorry, Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-17.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 16 Parks and Recreation of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to repeal Subchapter 16-2 Board of Park Commissioners.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. I'll take this one. This is another of the boards and commissions that we were looking at. It's kind of misleading because it's really an effort to streamline how we're doing things. This is the only board or commission that a department is attached with, that is created by this board. All of our other departments can create their own internal advisory boards, and so, we're not really doing away with the parks advisory board. We're simply giving that opportunity to the parks director to have the ability to select who he needs at a particular time instead of the static number of individuals that we have determined by ordinance that you have to have at this moment. So, it gives him greater flexibility, and it's not really doing away with the committee. It's just giving it to the parks director as the other department heads have that opportunity.
He can seek out experts if he needs them.
Yes. He doesn't have to rely on my choice of experts. He can choose his own experts. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That's the last item on our agenda. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, June 16th, at 4:30 PM. We're going into closed session, but we don't, I don't anticipate that we'll be voting on anything coming out, so thank you for tuning in.